I'd like to call the order, the Comic Council meeting for October 27th at 6:00 PM. We've done the pledge already, roll call.
Alderman Wolf.
Here.
Alderman Hamer.
Here.
Alderman Terrence.
Here.
Alderman Kapusta.
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt.
Here.
Alderman Kabaki.
Here.
Alderman Madden.
Here.
And Mayor Chivariati.
Nope.
Oops.
That was awesome.
Oopsie.
We have a quorum. Statement of public notice.
That's the first time it's happened in six months.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with open meeting law.
Public comment.
So I have a number of registration forms here. So my policy is pretty much to let you guys talk. There is technically a time period on it, which I'm not going to enforce, but I will ask you to keep it as brief as possible. There's lots of people here that want to talk and we have other business to do tonight, but I'm not going to sit here with a stopwatch and decide when you guys are done. So just going to start with the top. Michael, and I apologize in advance because I'm really bad with bad last names, so Recknagle? You're up first.
Come on up, come on up.
You've got to come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
You might have to turn that mic on. Yeah, you have to turn it on.
It's on top.
There you go.
Should be on top.
Is it on here?
Scott or Adam, could you assist? Adam will help you.
Adam, to the rescue.
There you go. There you go.
Hi. Michael Recknagle, West 190, South 70, 96, Wentland Drive. Here to comment on the 1449, I think is the, is the number of the item.
Is this the no-wake?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of keeping our lake in accordance with the state statute, which is no-wake from sunset to sunrise.
Ann? Do you wish to speak as well? James Henzie. Oh, there's an N at the end, sorry.
Yeah, I'm Jim Hanson. I live on West 186, South 7549, Kingston Drive. In 1984, I passed the law on this lake for no-ski with Paul Cook.
You're going to have to stand in front of the microphone, so...
With Hell Cook, I passed it, and Rick Logan. We're a fishing club and we're the ones that started the law. It's beneficial for the lake. We have way too much wakeboarding and everything else on this lake right now. It'd be much preferable to change it to nine o'clock even, but eight o'clock is fine and leave it alone. You know, that's how I feel. I think a lot of other people feel the same way. It's hard to be on that lake when it's dead calm these days, you know, especially with all those people and everybody being off-wake. The lake is just getting pounded by these big boats. You know, there are 30-footers out there that's ridiculous on this little lake. So we need probably a little bit more laws than what we're looking for today. And thank you very much.
John Met... Trying to read you ready, is it Matusenik?
Matusenik.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Matusenik.
What you said.
John Matusenik, W187, S6896, Gold Drive. I'm in favor of reconsideration of the slow no-wake ordinance, 1449, I think the previous gentleman said. This started as a correction to the evening start and resuming at 8:30. I'm sorry, the 8:30 stop or sunset resuming at 8:00 AM and changed to the sunrise start. According to the Lake Association, two-thirds of the people agreed with one of those previous methods, and I think it was a surprise to everybody when it changed to where it's at. The sunrise, and I'm sure some other people have done some research in the last couple of weeks on this, for example, on June 7th is 5:13 AM. It goes until June 21st. Memorial Day, it's 5:15, and the latest, just for reference, on Labor Day, it kicks in a little bit after 6:00, so pretty much the whole summer is right around that time. I don't think we need the extra traffic. It's taking away from a lot of the other activities, the kayaks, the paddleboards, the swimmers, the people that just want to go out and enjoy some quiet, whether they're from on the lake or off the lake, and I would recommend changing it back. There was a comment made about DNR recommendations, things like that. There's no such thing. The DNR does have some overall state ordinances, but if you look at the regulations and the ordinances in this area, for example, Okachee, Oconomowoc are slow no-wake, sunset to 8:00 AM, plus a 40 mile per hour speed limit. Phantom Lake nearby is skiing from 10:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 4:00 on weekends. Wind Lake, even closer, is sunset to 9:00 AM. Wabasee and Long Lakes are 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM, so it's not unusual to have local ordinances overriding the state. We're a unique lake. We're very close to Milwaukee. We get a lot of traffic. I think it's important to keep that couple hours of time in the morning, quieter time for the other lake activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Schneider, West 186, South 6850, Jewel Crest Drive. And I live in a relentless wake zone. I think it would be instructive if people could tell us when they come up here, if they live in a no-wake zone or not. If you live in a no-wake zone and you increase the hours of usage, it's not going to affect you because you're in a no-wake zone. You're not going to have a wake anyway, but everybody else gets pounded. The shoreline is continually pounded, the lake bottom is continually stirred up. I mean, isn't 12 and 1/2 hours of water skiing and power boating enough? And it's crazy to change it. Been that way for 36 years. I've lived on this lake all my life, and I remember the last meetings when we discussed this very same thing. It was very contentious. We settled on what it is now. It's worked okay for 36 years. Why mess with it? You know, it's... The Lake Association has sent out that flyer, and I don't know if you know much about the Lake Association. They've probably put $700,000 worth of improvements into this lake in dredging projects, buying property upstream to modulate the flow of water into the lake. They sent out the survey. 71% of the people wanted no less than 8:00 AM for the beginning of power boating. And 69% of them wanted the... Can't read my writing here. They wanted the sunset time, which was a good time. People need to watch to know what time they've got to start going slow. To me, this just flies in the face of common sense, starting at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. I don't go out and cut my grass in. Don't run my leaf blower. I have respect for my neighbors, and I think everybody else should have respect for their neighbors too, whether they live next to them or they live on the lakeshore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deb Bolton.
Hello, Deb Bolton, West 186, South 7543, Kingston Drive. And I hear what's being said here, that erosion's a problem. I do agree. But a slow no-wake ordinance, unless we're going to do it all the time on the lake, isn't going to stop that. If we want to deal with erosion of the shore, then let's deal with distance from shore. Let's not do a time. And I hear about that, well, we need to preserve our quiet time. That's for a small portion of this lake. This ordinance was put in 30-some years ago, and as Hesapoli said, it was a water skier versus fisherman argument. It was done in a time on this lake when there was probably a whopping three fishing boats or three ski boats on this lake. And those who were here, who were accustomed, who never wanted anything to change, were fearful of the change that was coming, and they thought they could stop it. Well, as we all know, you can't stop change. And if you look across this lake now, the makeup of this lake is far more speedboats. We're way beyond our three that we had back in the 70s and 80s. Now, the sort of starting package for a new resident is a powerboat, a pontoon boat, and two jet skis. It is what it is. We're not putting that horse back in the barn. It's gone, it's out. Water skiing or a slow no-wake ordinance at sunrise versus 8:00 doesn't stop a fisherman. You can still fish, even if you can go faster than slow no-wake. You can still paddleboard if you can go faster than slow no-wake. What you can't do is you can't waterski. And as I discussed before, Reparion's use of this lake, due to its overutilization, has gotten cut shorter and shorter and shorter. I'm not going to be waterskiing on a Saturday at 3:00 in the afternoon. I am just not. I'm not going anywhere near that boat, that lake. My boat is on the lift, period, because I'm terrified to be out there on that lake. But the discussion of the overutilization of this lake is a different matter. It has nothing to do with whether we start at 8:00 AM or we can start at 5:30 AM. And quite frankly, there's a handful of diehards on this lake. I've been out there at Tuesday at 7:00 AM. I've been out there at Wednesday at 7:00 AM. There's about five boats. It's not going to be a big deal. It's not going to be Saturday at 3:00 in the afternoon, at Tuesday at 5:00 AM. It simply is not. So don't let that fearmongering sway your decision. And I heard about noise. A fishing boat at slow no-wake is just as loud as a ski boat. Now, I understand...[722.12][722.12](laughter) I don't... I personally either don't want to have a wakeboard boat...
Please keep your...
...out there with their speakers cranking and their loud music, but again, that's another issue. That has nothing to do with slow no-wake. That does have to do with being good neighbors and don't crank your tunes as you're going by their houses, but that would be just as true at 10:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, as it would be at 8:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning. You want to listen to music? Fine. You don't have to play it loud enough so that they can listen to it in Tishigan. But again, that's another issue. I heard it also brought up about lakes that have ordinances like these, you know, the cutting it in from the times of sunset and sunrise. There's also seven lakes in the nearby area of a similar size to us that are sunset to sunrise, lakes such as Lock La Belle, Danune, you brought up, Lower Nabobin, Nagawica, Oconomowoc, Pine, and Tishigan. Tishigan is our neighbor just over the border to the south. These are all lakes that also have left it at the sunset to sunrise. Is it for every municipality to choose? Yes, it is. But I think it is time again, as we discussed, if we don't have the will to enforce it, why do we have it? And it's time as well to allow everyone to utilize the lake as they see fit, not a select few. Thank you.
Thank you.[821.75][821.75](applause) Please keep your applause. Thank you. Mike Zarnicki.
Hi there. Mike Zarnicki, S69, W17915, Muskego Drive. I had a chance to speak to most of the aldermen here and sent each of you an email earlier this week, or earlier, late last week, and I'm requesting that the city of Muskego reconsider the current ordinance regarding the hours for no-wake on Little Muskego Lake and I guess the other lakes, but I'm specifically talking about Little Muskego Lake. As you know, this was changed from 8:30 PM to sunrise, as in the current ordinance, and request that the previous ordinance, number 502, be reinstated as 8:30 PM to 8:00 AM that had been in place for 36 years. The new ordinance for no-wake hours would allow ski boats, jet skis, wake boats to operate at full speed, and I assume with music at sunrise. For reference, sunrise for the months of September, May through September are 5:27 AM, 5:11 AM, 5:26 AM, 5:58 AM, and 6:32 AM. I have no idea how many boats would start using the boat, using the lake at these earlier hours, but it'd be more than we have now. And I've guessed the numbers will only increase as more and more learn about the change in times on Little Muskego Lake. Right now, the ski boats are very respectful... The boats that are out there, they're very respectful to the 8:00 start time. You can set your watch, it's 8:00, and 8:01 or 8:00, the boats are doing their thing, and that's just fine. Well, you know, we frankly, I live on the lake there. I get a private ski show almost every morning, and it's kind of enjoyable to start your day that way. But if the ordinance is allowed to stand as it is, the impact will be to fishermen, kayakers, stand-up paddleboarders, canoes, and others who just want to enjoy the quiet of the morning. I'm sure we all enjoy the quiet of the morning, whether you're on the lake or whether you're off the lake, to have your quiet part of the day. As the day goes on, you know, lawnmower start, businesses start up, everything, and that's just what it is in living here. And I can, I accept that and expect that. The users I just mentioned, they're already competing for use of the lake after 8:00 when the no-wake and the restrictions are eased, and frankly, it's dangerous to be out there on a stand-up paddleboard, kayak, canoe, whatever you're doing on the lake, or even just swimming, if you're anywhere outside of the beach area. It's dangerous to be out there. I understand that others enjoy the lake during early morning hours or late at night, such as, you know, there's hunters that are out there, especially on weekends, they're hunting ducks, you know, shooting their guns, there's snowmobilers, and there's ice fishermen. And while I may not enjoy that part of the noise, I... It's part of the rule, it's part of the game, it's what it is. I can accept it. And frankly, that happens in the fall and in the winter. And in the fall and the winter, my doors and windows are closed, and we all spend more time in our house. So whatever noise that is being generated by that activity, it just is not as impactful as a speedboat or a wakeboat or a jet ski that's out on the water early in the morning. So the prior ordinance wasn't broken, but now it is. In conclusion, I think it's unreasonable to allow the no-wake hours to end as early as sunrise, and I ask that you reinstate the prior no-wake hours of 8:30 PM to 8:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.[1031.83][1031.83](applause) Please keep, please keep, please keep that pause to him, minimum. Scott Dickman.
Can I take this off when I speak?
Yep.
Thanks. Scott Dickman, S69, W17945, Muskego Drive. Regarding the slow no-wake, I would like to have it changed back to the way it was previously from 8:00 AM until, or sunrise, or sunset till 8:00 AM. So Little Muskeg is everyone's lake. It's not just those who live on it. We've, we've taken a look at the slow no-wake time that's been in place for 36 years, and we need to look at it holistically. I agree with Ms. Bolton, you know, this lake has become really, really busy. I agree with her on that, and things do change. However, you know, we cannot look at the slow make, slow no-wake from just a skier's perspective. We as skiers all know that the wind may come up at any time, so therefore, if it's coming from the west, we ski on the west side. If it comes from the east, we ski on the east side. So there's always a calm water to be found. And as a side note, once a lake is active from that 8:00 AM on, and as the gentleman before had stated, you can set your watch by 8:00, and there are some diehards, as Ms. Bolton had also mentioned. There's probably five or six, and everybody knows who they are, and they're fun to watch because they're really good skiers, a lot of them are on the ski team, and they're very respectful of that time, as they have been for all of these years as well. But again, once, once this lake is active, the wave action, it doesn't calm down until later in the evening. So we see skiers in the morning from 8:00 AM until, say, 8:30-ish, maybe 9:00, if it's a weekday. Weekends are a little bit less, but then we also see the skiers coming back out just before dusk and taking their last runs because things have calmed down. So we need to take in consideration the life quality of, of all that want to enjoy the lake and have different interests in this equation, and a lot of them have been mentioned, right? The skiers, the fishermen, the paddleboarders. And by the way, today, paddleboarders are not just paddleboarding in the morning, they're doing meditation out on the lake, they're trying to do yoga on the lake. So there's a lot of more activity that's being utilized when it's a calm time of the day. Swimmers, canoes, divers, et cetera. So, and also individuals that come from outside of the community and go to Idle Island, park their car just for the tranquil morning with a cup of coffee and gaze at the lake and/or the other 18 access points that we have for young kids that go fishing or off the fishing docks, it's a peaceful time for them. It was mentioned about the survey. It was 220 respondents, there was actually more than that, but out of that 220, 71% is what was mentioned, 159 of them, they wanted it to stay the same. In essence, they wanted it to stay the same. I'm almost there. By changing the slow no-wake time that was in place for 36 years, you have totally discredited all of the other users that want to enjoy the lake in their own peaceful way without any option available for them. So in essence, you opened up a bigger window for a few and closed it for all others completely. And I ski, so I'm respectful of that, and there's a lot more activity that happens. Sunrise starting was mentioned, 5:16, starting in June through August 31st, 6:16. So I don't need to go any further there. It was also mentioned, not only at this meeting but the last meeting, that to have a law or an ordinance that we do not enforce, maybe we shouldn't have it. That may be true. In fact, if that was the case, so for as an example, then we shouldn't have burning, certain burning laws on the books because we don't, you know, we don't enforce them all the way. And why don't we remove the slow no-wake areas from the whole lake, like Kingston Bay, on all the lakes as well and in place, because we're not, you know, we're not enforcing them either. So then why do we even have slow no-wake areas? And by the way, you know, I mean, to remove some of these things that maybe aren't enforceable, they're enforceable, we just choose not to enforce them. If we would utilize our resources and say, hey, come out to the lake and see what's going on, you know, we can enforce whatever law we want to enforce if they're on the books. So the other thing is, that was mentioned, was consistency across our lakes. You know, then we should have the same boat, you know, this is kind of ridiculous, but at the same time, we should have the same amount of boat launches on all our lakes, maybe the same size fish. You know, consistency is nice, however, it's not always possible. So I do not own the lake, but I'm a citizen of Muskego, and I appreciate people that live on and off the lake and want to enjoy it at their own unique way. So thank you for reconsidering this and changing the slow wake back to what it was, sunset to 8:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.[1322.08][1322.08](applause) Please stop the applause. Is there, does everyone who wants to speak have a slip up here? Because otherwise, we're on to our last one coming up. If you, all right. James Hanson, can you get the final word?
(inaudible).
Oh. And who was?
(inaudible).[1340.15][1340.15](laughter)
Did you fill out two?
I live on the lake. I'm at West 180, South 6765, Muskego Drive. I've lived on the lake my whole life. Actually own a bunch of properties around the lake. I, I know lots and lots of people around the lake. I spoke with at least 50 people that aren't here tonight about it, and they are totally against the new law. They'd like, like back to 8:00 to 8:30. My number one, I'm a water skier, I'm a jet skier, I'm a fisherman, I'm a canoeer, I do it all. And I think it should be equal rights for everybody on this. And in the morning, you cannot paddleboard or jet ski, I mean paddleboard or canoe or anything with water skeeters running through the bays, like they said. It's, I live by the boat launch, it gets very loud. I like to sleep my doors open and enjoy the peaceful morning. I do, I love it. That's why we moved here, and I would like to keep it that way if possible.
Thank you. What was, just so I make sure, what was her name?
James Hanson.
Okay, I do, there are two of you. All right. Thank you very much. I am going to change the agenda order since we have full room here, and the issue they came from isn't till further down the agenda, so there is a possible reconsideration of ordinance 1449. There was a request for that. If that's the case, I'll need a motion from one of the aldermen that voted in the affirmative on that, which was all of you, I believe.
I'd like to offer that motion that we reconsider. One second.
All right. Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, and this is only to bring it back to the table to then discuss what they're going to do with it. So, motion to reconsider, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So ordinance number 1449 is back on the floor. Who wants to start?
Motion to change the no-wake hours from sunset to 8:00 AM.
Second. I like it.
Further discussion? Now, originally, we were... Is this for all lakes? Is this for...
All lakes.
Okay.
Second degree.
So we did, originally, the, I was told that there was going to be a motion to talk about this the next meeting, so we did let people know that this is, that we weren't going to take action on it tonight. It's your meeting, you can take action on it if you wish, but I would, I guess I would kind of encourage you to...
I think we've got a pretty representative audience here.
That's fine. It's your vote, you can do what you want. I just want to, we did send out to the public that, or let out the public know that there was nothing going on, so just to throw that out there. Any further discussion?
I, I was thinking about wanting that deferment be, originally because I wasn't sure the message was out last time, that was one of the reasons to consider a reconsider motion. And, you know, it didn't take 24 hours before people were speaking to me after, after the last time. So that's why I was in favor of reconsideration, so it's up to the rest of the council on that then, what's been offered now.
Well, we ended up fixing something that didn't need fixing. Got it sideways, and now here we are. And I think, Kevin, your motion should stand, and we should vote on it.
The, I just want to explain to everyone here, how did we get here?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, through, through a meeting with the Lake Association earlier, when I first took office, they pointed out that our ordinance was inadvertently changed probably two years ago when we recodified or redid all of our ordinances as a in-mass thing. So it was changed on the books to be sunset, I believe, 8:00 AM till sunset. Counsel never discussed that, and I was aware of that, and our signs also did not reflect that. Our signs had the old thing on. So my intention in bringing it back here was just to get the ordinance to match the sign. It wasn't to change anything, it was just, let's, let's do a housekeeping thing. So it took a life of its own, it got changed, you guys talked, you came and fought City Hall, and we're back here again. So I just wanted to give a little history of why we're here today.
Before we would close this or go to a vote or anything, I'd like to suggest, are we, I understand what Kevin is offering here, but I'm big Muskego, fishermen heading out, having them at no-wake, that's a whole different lake than Little Muskego, and I'm just wondering if we should make an exception and divide off. I'm not sure that's the best policy. Just a thought.
Does anyone have any interest in amending the motion?
Rob likes consistency, and I think it should be the same everywhere. That would be my opinion.
Good work.[1659.01][1659.01](inaudible).
All right. We're done talking. All those in favor of the motion to, from eight, from sunset till 8:00 AM, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone.[1671.53][1671.53](applause) Moving on with the agenda. Communications in the mayor's office, just to reiterate what we had talked about earlier, in-person voting has been going well and brisk. We've had about 800, 800 people per day coming through, so we're on...
Can't hear anything.
All right. Just going to give a minute to clear the room.
I could only hear 800 something.
Early voting started earlier this week, or last week, actually, or earlier this, last week, sorry. It's been brisk. We've had about 800 people through per day. We're on track to be at 70% of our voting population will either absentee vote or vote early, so it's a good sign. And that's all I have for communications. Moving on to, we have a public hearing. Public hearing to hear any citizen on the proposed 2021 city budget to consider amendments. You know, the first, that's the first here, public hearing, so I'm going to turn it over to Sharon to start.
Thank you. The public hearing this evening will provide a budget overview for the city's operations, which include the general debt service, special revenue, and capital project funds. The budget process began several months ago with setting budget goals in order to aid in the budget document, document preparation. The final committee of the whole budget meeting concluded on October 13th, whereby the committee recommended certain amendments to the general operating budget, which included reinstating the human resource position, participating in the school district athletic field lighting... project, dedicating funding for the historic settlement roof repair, reducing the one-time funding source from the community development fund by applying the additional transportation aids estimate, and lastly, a 3% hydrant rental adjustment to reflect the proposed simplified water utility rate increase. All recommended adjustments have been included in the public hearing budget agenda documentation. This next chart provides a financial summary of the city funds as outlined in the budget overview and include 2019 actual, 2020 projected, and 2021 budgeted revenues, expenditures, fund balance, and tax data. As noted, the 2021 net fund balance reduction resulted from dedicating existing funds to Hillendale Road Project, Test Corners Volunteer Fire Department fire gear, and aerial ladder fire truck, Park Arthur Field renovations, and participation in the Muskego Norway School District Field Lighting Project. The 2021 levy adjustment includes an additional $35,469 for tax increment district funding, a $50,000 debt service levy increase to maintain and plan for affordable future debt levels, and an additional $291,040 for various general operations expenditure increases listed in the chart below, including the assessment revaluation, police vehicle replacement, contracted service and software fees, vehicle maintenance, and property insurance premium. Please note increased permit fees and the elimination of the civil tech and court clerk positions will offset the recommended employee wage and benefit adjustments and new positions. As for the city tax levy, the state mandate restriction to net new growth amounted to $225,968, or 1.74%. State statutes allow for an adjust, also allow for an adjustment to utilize prior year's unused levy carryforward. This amount is determined by taking a percentage of the unused allowable levy and calculated on a five-year rolling average. Beginning in 2022, the available funds will be significantly reduced. Therefore, the budget as proposed includes utilizing $115,072, or 74.5% of these funds to offset the inflationary expenditures noted earlier, as well as future operating budget increases. As a result, the estimated city tax rate is anticipated to increase by 8 cents to $4.55 per $1,000 of assessed value. Of the total $13.8 million tax levy, approximately $11 million will fund expenditures for basic operations in the general fund. $2.2 million will be dedicated for principal and interest payments, and $519,000 will be applied towards the active tax district increments. In comparison to other surrounding municipalities, Muskego's tax rate is substantially less. The following slides summarize the general fund revenue and expenditure categories reflecting a balanced increase of $441,439, or 2.76%. The monthly cost of proposed operating expenditures amounts to approximately $54 per capita, using the latest population estimate of 25,271, which is a slight increase of $1 over the prior year calculation. Of total revenues, approximately 81.2% are generated from taxes and intergovernmental aids. The reductions shown in the miscellaneous and other sources categories are a result of declining investment earnings and the water utility tax rate equivalent. As in prior years, the largest city expenditures category remains within the public safety divisions, equating to 45% of total general fund operating costs, and include police, dispatcher, volunteer fire, and building inspection services. The next fund included in this public hearing is the debt service fund and is used to account for the principal and interest payments on all general obligation debt. Funding sources include property taxes, tax increment financing, conservation fund reimbursement, and interest earnings. For the current year, the city's total principal balance outstanding is $38 million, leaving a debt capacity limit of $134 million, or 76.85%. This amounts to a $5 million debt reduction over the prior year and is contributed to the final payment of two tax increment district borrowings. In addition, the recent refunding of another tax increment district-related government general obligation bond equates to a present value savings of approximately $190,000 over the remaining term of the issuance. Future borrowing plans, refinancing, and debt levy projections continue to indicate minimal increases. Summarized in this following chart are the special revenue funds, otherwise known as specific purpose programs. The expenditure activities for 2021 resulted in a projected grand total for all funds combined of approximately $4.5 million, and include tax increment-related debt payments, various park improvements, and the recommended closure of TIDS 8 and 9. The final budget for review at this public hearing is the 2021 capital projects, and amounts to a net total of approximately $5.8 million. Financing for the majority of items will be funded by the landfill host fees and consist of various technology-related and equipment requests from the finance, information technology, public safety, and public works departments. Other funding sources include reserves from grants, prior year's debt issuance, interest earnings, the revolving loan fund closeout, and tax increment residuals, which will offset the Hillendale Road Project, and public works and volunteer fire department capital purchases. This concludes the 2021 budget public hearing presentation. All proposed balanced budgets, including the tax levy, will be considered for approval by the common council this evening. Thank you.
At this time, if anyone would like to be heard in regards to the budget, please come forward, state your name and address. Going once, going twice. I declare this public hearing closed. We'll move on to the next public hearing to consider the amendments to various sections of Section 392 Land Division Ordinance and Section 400 Zoning Code of the City of Muskego Municipal Code. Adam, can you give us an overview of this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is really some cleanup efforts. The first three, which are all part of Section 392, all relate to surveying and GIS elevation data. City uses, and all GIS and surveying uses datums, which is a goofy way to say, how do we make the flat world, or how do we make the round world flat on a map? So there's all these different datums that are used, and working with Title and GIS Department, Waukesha County has been transitioning to a different datum. We're just updating our ordinances to match that, doesn't negatively, should not negatively affect anybody. It's just something surveyors and GIS professionals need to be aware of when they do their mapping. And there's just some cleanup in there. There were some references to like using floppy disks and stuff, so we just updated that to some more current technology. And then there's also one change in Section 400, which relates to, as you may be aware, the city has a groundwater separation requirement. And the way the ordinance was amended, when we did a, I think it was during the recodification or shortly thereafter, we basically changed it to say, any variances should be made through the public works and safety committee. And we kind of further tweaked that to say, any variances shall be received, you know, by the public, shall be heard by the public works and safety committee, with the recommendation being made to common council, who would make the final affirmation and approval.
Thank you. At this time, anyone would like to be heard on the changes to Section 392? Please come forward. Anyone? Anyone? I'll declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to the next public hearing to consider the petition of Mark and Linda Troeger for the property known as Tax Key Number 2284.971, and part of Tax Key Number 2283.997.001, located on the South Dunne Road, be granted a 2020 comprehensive plan amendment from rural density residential land to use to medium density residential land use for the purposes of allowing a future land division on the properties.
So this item here, there was a conceptual land division that was brought forward in front of the plan commission earlier this year for the Troeger family, looking to sever off a lot from some larger land owned by their family. Plan commission looked favorably upon this request, and as part of the due diligence of that preparation of that conceptual review, it was determined that a land use amendment for our 2020 comprehensive plan needs to be amended, as the mayor mentioned, from rural density to medium density. All the homes that are east of this area, which these are very similar to those, are all medium density already. So these were just kind of two outlier parcels that weren't medium density. So the applicant has made this request to change that land use category, and then if this gets approved, there's a CSM that would be proceeding through the plan commission.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Form a single file line? All right. I'll declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to new business. Resolution 0812020, approval of the 2021 general fund operating budget and tax levy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Wolf.
I think when we first went through this budget and it came out, the CDA money of $190,000 was in there, and nobody objected to having it in there, only because we found that we had enough transportation money to move over, which we should anticipate it, but we changed it. So we were using that money to reduce taxes on the operating budget. And again, I'm going to say, nobody objected to it. And when I brought up the concerns of maybe we should use that money, because it's the taxpayers' money, we should put it in there, then there was objections to it. So I believe that money should be put back in to reduce the taxes.
Further comments?
I know we've had a lot of discussion about this, so we're sort of at the vote point. I'm sort of where I stood last time. I would like to see us use a one-time, and something Rob had mentioned too, for this year, a one-time funding source to cover the difference instead of the tax increase. That's kind of where I'm at on this. But I'm not necessarily making a motion. I know we've got, I've had a lot of time to work through it, and if that's not the consensus, I don't want to belabor the point by making motions and having things go down. But that's, that's where I'm at at this point.
I would just like to make council aware that the transportation aids estimate that we're using is 100% of the estimate, and it could actually come in 10% less. So you are taking a risk if you use a 1% funding source, and then that transportation aids comes in 10%, that would be a huge hit. We'd have to wipe out our entire contingency fund.
I understand that, but the money was in there originally, and nobody complained about it, and it seemed to be a good idea, and all of a sudden, it became a bad idea. And that's, that's my point.
Mayor?
Yes.
To me, one of the fundamentals of a city budget is not using one-time revenues to fund ongoing expenses. I think it's, it's a very risky proposition, because next year, you have to pay for that. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, Rob, but I disagree that we should use a one-time funding expense for an ongoing expense.
No, I understand, I understand, but my point is, nobody seemed to care until it was actually pointed out that it wanted to be used to reduce taxes. It was a good idea until, until it wasn't a good idea.
And I, I guess I'll correct that. No, it was never a good idea.
Well, it was in there, and it was presented to us as a good idea.
It was an ugly budget, and still is, not where I'd like it to be, but it's, it's where we're at. I mean, we had a number of positions that were approved last year without funding. We had things that were obligated to changes through that we had, that we had to address. And yeah, that was a way of, you know, getting through it, but by far was not, it was not how I'd run my household, and I don't think we should run the city, the city with, you know, one-term, one-time funding sources moving forward, because it just, it magnifies it again next year, you know? You're going to, you're going to have a larger problem next year by doing it. It's just not, it's not.
I understand all that, but I think, I think the point I'm trying to make is, it was a good idea to bring taxes down because it was a way to do it, until it was a bad idea to do it. So that's my point. I don't have a problem, because it is the taxpayers' money. I don't want to beat the dead horse. I think consensus is people don't want to do it, otherwise I'd make a motion to put it in, but I believe there's, there's ways we could, we could do it, and this is one of the ways to do it. So that's just my point.
And if I could just add, last year, we did use a one-time funding source of the $54,500 from the capital improvement fund. So we had to make up that $54,000 this year. That was part of our deficit.
So what we are using.
Now you're perpetuating the problem.
But we're doing it again this year as well.
I know, and you would perpetuate it.
For how much? $25,000?
For $200,000.
I'm sorry, what was that, the last part?
If you add, well, I'm just rounding up. So if you put the 190 in, we will have to, you understand, we have to make that up again next year. So our deficit, if we start off with a $500,000 deficit, you're going to add the $200,000 that we have to make up. Right now, we're making up the $54,000 from last year. It just perpetuates.
And the $24,000 from this year, too. We're putting, we're using $24,000 of money out of there.
That is correct.
In this budget as well.
Right.
But my point is, it was a good idea until it became, until, when we had a higher tax increase, it was a good idea until we figured out a way to do a lower tax increase. So I mean, that's, that's my point.
And well taken, but I guess that's why we have a budget cycle, and we just don't present and do a budget all in one night.
No, you're right, and that's why I presented.
We found a better way to, and a better way, a better budget to come to, and I think we're there now.
I just think it was a good idea to stay with it and.
So Rob, are you making a motion on this?
No, I, I don't believe I need to, because I know the.
So mute point then.
I know the, I know it's not a mute point, the point is, is that there's, there's revenue to do this, and I think John and I both had different ideas of how we can do it. He had another idea as well, but I just want to point it out, so this is a discussion part of it, so it's not mute.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. And I guess I want to point out to the people that are here and that are watching at home, it's still the taxpayers' money, and it will be used at some point for something to benefit the taxpayers. It just won't be used, if we can help it, as operating, use it in one-time purchases or things like that where it's more appropriate.
I guess what we need to do then is figure out before the end of the year, and have that money laying around where we can do this again next year, and say we can use it until we find a way we can't use it. Maybe we should figure out what we want to do with that money throughout the year beforehand.
Fair enough. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Wolf?
No.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
No.
Alderman Kapusta?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman, or Kubaki, I'm sorry?
Yes.
And Alderman Madden?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 0822020, approval of the 2021 capital budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
Yes.
Alderman Kapusta?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
And Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 0832020, approval of the 2021 sewer utility budgets and rates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
Yes.
Alderman Kapusta?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
And Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 0842020, approval of the 2021 water utility budget and rates.
Move to approve.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
Yes.
Alderman Kapusta?
Yes.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
And Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda includes approval of operator's license, approval of minutes from October 13th, Resolution 0852020, approval of release of surety bond for Muskego School Apartments LLC, approval, I'm sorry, Resolution 0862020, acceptance and dedication of public utilities from Muskego School Apartments LLC, Resolution 0872020, award of bid for well number 11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Consent agenda's passed unanimously. Unfinished. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. Unfinished business. Ordinance 1452, an ordinance to amend Chapter 350, Article 3 of the Municipal Code of the City of Meskigo Recycling, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderman Madden. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Review of committee reports. They're in front of you, Finance, Park, and Committee of the Whole. First reading of ordinance and second reading, if rules are waived, ordinance 1453.
Sorry, real quick, I'm interrupting. In case you didn't know, the park donation, she reached her fundraising goal for that, the Hope, the fundraiser. I'm butchering this whole thing, but I know we were talking about her raising the $40,000. She announced that she hit her goal, so. Just kind of wanted to.
Was that today?
It was either today or yesterday.
Okay, she had a fundraiser yesterday.
Yeah, it might have been yesterday, and it hit at the end of the night, so. Congratulations.
Very cool. Moving on to ordinance 1453, an ordinance to amend the 220 comprehensive plan of the City of Meskigo. Mark and Linda, Linda Troger. It's just a first reading on this. Moving on to ordinance 1454, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 392 and 400 of Municipal Code of the City of Meskigo. First reading. Any questions or anything you need from staff on that? Moving on to license approvals. Could I get a motion to approve licenses? Are there any? No. There are none. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $403,151.78.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No tax vouchers. Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $515,699.61.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes.
And motion to approve wire transfers for payroll transmittals in the amount of $363,716.61.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. City officials reports. We have none. Communications and miscellaneous business. Any updates from any liaisons on any of your committees?
Yeah, I was at the festival, had their meeting the other night, and for what they had to go through this year and only have it one day, they were really successful and turned out really well for them this year.
Good. That's a surprise. I thought they would have been in the red quite a bit. Good. All right. Any future agenda items needed? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned at 6:55. Thank you, everyone.